I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our dollar, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Please call Rohl.
Mr. Christiansen.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modra.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Rohl.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
All nine members present.
Okay, I would like to remind the public, if you're watching, that you could call in at 412-851-6911 in order to comment on the agenda items or afterwards to comment on anything. Additionally, we have a public comments Google that you can fill out and submit also if you'd like to make a comment. At this time, I don't see any comments.
Actually, there's 11.
There's 11.
Oh, wow. There's another.
All same subject.
Can't figure out how to read them.
Okay.
I don't see them all, though.
I can't.
It's all same subject.
Can't figure out how to read this form.
All about major.
There's three.
I don't even know where to find it.
Are they different? Are they the same as they were last?
It's all about major.
There's like three, I think, actually.
10. I got 10 responses on one.
But they're not.
11.
But I don't see the written.
Okay, let's. Are all of these that you can see so far about things that we should do at the end of the meeting?
I can't even see them.
I can see the one. It's from a student.
It's about the 12.
It's about the.
The Dobus, they're all about major.
Yes.
All 11?
Yes.
I scanned them right now. So I see all 11 from students and parents. Not to disrespect them, but they're all about the major Ed subjects, so.
Okay, so we can read it after the meeting, then? Any phone calls?
No calls at the moment.
Okay. Does anyone have any committee reports from outside the district that you'd like to comment on or report on?
I just want to say that Steel Center took a poll of their students, a survey, to see if they would come back to summer school. And about 30% of them are going to attend summer school so they can get their certificates and things like that, which is good. So that was a good thing. That's it mainly.
Okay, and I just want to report that Shade Tree Commission sponsored the planting of trees at Neil Armstrong two Fridays ago, I believe it was, and it was successful. And the next planting, Mr. Fierst, will be.
We are looking towards October for Memorial and IMS.
Okay, thank you. So if you are over at Neil Armstrong, they're planted on the hillside there, going down to the soccer field, I believe. That's where the most of them are? Okay.
So I'd like to say that the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee met last Wednesday. It was our second meeting. We had an introductory meeting. Last week, we started poring over our mission, vision, and beliefs for the committee itself, as well as starting to pour over some of the data, the inventory that Dr. O'Rourke, our principals and administrators compiled for us, starting to dive into where we are right now. We're scheduled to have another Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion meeting, not tomorrow, but the following Wednesday. And I'm very happy with the progress we're making so far and the team that we have.
Any other committee reports? I'm also liaison with the Recreation Department, and the good news is that that committee is now at full capacity. The council passed or put seven more members on it, so I think there's 11 total members on the Recreation Board, which allows everyone to play a role. And there are various committees that people are on, so looking for a renewed and a re-energized Recreation Department. And for those meetings, if you would like to participate or to comment or to come, there is public participation also with that, if you're interested in anything with the Rec Department.
Mrs. Dobus.
Yes.
I'd just like to let the board know that the municipality would like to follow the same limitations or policies that the school sets up in the diversity area in our recreation. They would like to know what we're doing and what those policies look like because they would like to follow the same policies.
Do you want to talk? Mrs. Rohl, do you want to mention about the Candidates Night?
About what?
Candidates Night?
The chamber is hosting the Candidates Night this year, and there are quite a few candidates, both for school board and council. It will begin at 6:00. It will end at 9:15. It will be televised and held in municipal chambers. Questions I've asked you to submit, they will come from each of the sitting incumbents, and they will be asked of the candidates. And we will also take questions from the public, and we're going to have it on Facebook, that even some of them can submit them ahead of time. And then, because of the time and so many candidates, at the end, we're going to take the other questions that have been submitted, put them on Facebook, and all candidates will have an opportunity to answer them and have their answers published.
And what date is that again?
It is on the 4th of May from 6:00 to 9:15.
And the public's participation is only via Zoom or remote, right? Because they can't come to them?
Yes, yes. We are asking that the questions be submitted, you know, via email, and then we will post them on Facebook for the ones that will not answer during the session.
Okay.
With their responses.
So only the candidates will be in the room?
Yes, yes. Yes, the capacity is limited to 25 to 30 people, so there'll be very few that can actually get in.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Dr. Walsh?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Dobus. Good evening, everyone. Just the first two announcements. We had a great chance tonight, before I came in, to watch our girls' softball team battling Baldwin. On the field, it was also senior rec night, and this team's undefeated, and there are eight seniors being honored for their participation in girls' softball. And that's really the season we're in, is spring sports season getting towards a point when we honor the seniors for their commitment to the sport and support of the school and the athletic program. So congratulations to all those folks, and sorry I couldn't see you finish the game up, but you're doing really well during the parts that I got to see. It's also spring musical season, and so we have two shows coming up here in May, the High School Musical and IMS, the shows. I'm pleased to say that we're looking forward to having some of our kids perform and get to see their talents on the stage, in addition to the seniors we get to see perform on the field. I have two items also for consideration tonight. The first is, by request from some board members, to talk about class sizes, and just kind of left it as an open item topic for answering your questions. I am working on generating an updated report for the board on where we are with class-sized numbers currently, and that would be a K-12 look for you to see on how enrollments are. But I'm here with a pen in my hand, wondering what you wanted to talk about with regard to class size, those that asked for it.
Jim, you want to go, or you want me to go?
Go ahead, please. Ladies first.
I had. Mary Beth sends us a enrollment list monthly, so I did some ratios. There are a lot of us on this board that believe there should be 20 students to one teacher in K to 3. We're. And we had a prior board that would tell us that overall, we had a 1 to 18 ratio. We don't have that right now. My son is sitting in the largest class in kindergarten in this school district. There are 75 students in first grade at Memorial. They're sitting in 1 to 25, and that is unweighted. Large concern in a year of a pandemic, large concern for next year that those students will now be in second grade in 1 to 25, unweighted. I would ask that we look at the option of either a fourth teacher for a year until we get through the strategic plan, other options the administration could come up with to wait that class to be as close to 20 to 1 in that building as possible. You've got the same scenario in fourth grade. Going into fourth grade, the current third grade class at William Penn and the current third grade class at Washington, both are 24.5 to 1. Compared to Washington's kindergarten class, which is 14 to 1, Penn's kindergarten classes, which are sitting at 15 to 1, Franklin's kindergarten classes, which are sitting at 13.5 to 1. Most of them are ranged between, you know, 19 to 1, 22 to 1, those kinds of things. Again, I just did this based on our numbers, and they're not weighted. So a lot of parents in this district, you know, over the last two and a half years, as I sit and listen to them, 20 to 1, that would also be a great accomplishment for Bethel Park moving forward. Part of the student experience that I would like to look at as we move forward with the strategic plan is K to 3, 20 to 1. How do we make that happen? What are the goals? What are the benefits of having 20 students in a class? Where do our PSA scores look like? We have a building right now that does very well with PSAs. Why? Because I can read them off to you. Kindergarten's 15 to 1, first grade's 15.5 to 1, second grade's 17 to 1, fourth grade's 20 to 1. That needs to be along with the whole district.
Okay, thank you.
And just to restate also, thank you, Dr. Walsh, for bringing this up. It's just that philosophically as a district, to have that as our mindset is that we achieve throughout the district a goal of, you know, I think educationally speaking, it's 20 to 1 at these lower grades, and trying to keep these imbalances from one building to another. And it's not going to happen overnight, and if possibly, they'll be part of our long-term planning as we work forward our feasibility study. But there are some inequities coming up in some of the schools based on the numbers and some alternative plans, trying to get those numbers balanced out as best as we can.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other input on this topic?
This is. This topic has come up just about every year. I've been on the board in terms of parity in the numbers in the classrooms, and it's such a difficult issue to address when you have five different elementary schools. So we've never really come up with a fantastic solution, but we're asking you to look at it anyway, to see if there's something that can be done. And hopefully, with the strategic plan, we can come up with a long-term solution for this because that equality parity only happens if everyone's in a similar same building or future buildings, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only comment I would make, you know, as a parent, I went through a redistricting, and I know that that's not something you want to do every couple of years. It's not going to work that way.
Right.
So, I mean, there has to be some other solution other than, you know, we can't, we'll never be able to understand where people are moving and when they come into the district or where they move into the district. So there's going to be some natural inequities we can't deal with, but we need to, you know, as we figure out the strategic plan, I think that'll help work that through.
And Dr. Walsh, for clarification, I'm looking for something for the fall to kind of smooth over some of these inequities until we can implement the whole strategic planning process, knowing that is a goal of this whole board, is looking for the equity and equality across.
Well, we did at one time, if you were a new student and moved into the district, you did not go to a school near you. You were bused to a school where they had lesser students, and that didn't work. So we have tried several different, you know, options, but that was one. If you came in and the classes were full, you were bused to another school.
Right, and that was put to an end, my understanding from just asking questions. That was put to an end in 2011 when we redistricted, but at that point in time, as parents sitting in a boardroom with the then acting superintendent, we were told that the redistricting would happen every five years, so you didn't have this issue. We're now 10 years later and haven't seen it happen at all.
And we no longer have neighborhood schools anymore. Most of them are at the southern end of the district, so neighboring schools isn't an issue today. So, you know, redistricting can happen, but you're going to have issues, you know. It is one solution, but you're going to have to realize that you're going to get repercussions, you know. Try our best.
Okay. All right, thank you. The second topic for tonight, I asked Dr. Gensani to update the board on some changes to the health and safety plan. We know that through advice from CDC down to PA Department of Health and then down to school districts, and things have need to be updated in our plan to keep in times with what the current recommendations are, the current requirements. I'll note, at the same time as we talk about updating the plan, that we also still remain in Allegheny County in substantial transmission, so the numbers are still high. And in particular, the numbers seem to be high skewing at a younger age than they had been even through the fall and winter. So as much as the plan can be updated with some significant changes, the mode of operation really isn't changing much because of the conditions. So would you, Dr. Gensani, would you walk us through those changes, please?
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Walsh mentioned, on March 30th, Pennsylvania Department of Ed, in conjunction with our governor, has made some changes. Prior to that, one of the significant changes was the changes to travel restrictions. So I'm going to quickly go over a few things with regard, I have provided the board, as well as all the members on the Health and Safety Plan Committee, a copy of this draft. And of course, if we find something that we need to add or change, we certainly can do that before next board meeting. So with that said, probably one of the most important items on this whole document needs changes is putting our new superintendent, Dr. Walsh, in the right category. Thank you, Dr. Temprio, but it's time to move over. Dr. Walsh is on board, so he, we're going to put him in that spot, and the interim piece will be dropped. So with that said, looking at the changes quickly here, one of the most profound changes has to do with closing schools. And what we've followed before are the guidelines based upon substantial or moderate, when to close a school based on the number of positive cases within that individual building. Well, this plan and changes coming from the state gives us much more autonomy and flexibility. Of course, we can always reference and contact the Allegheny County Health Department if we need advisement along the way. Generally speaking, we do a deep cleaning every Friday, typically every Friday, and after you do a deep cleaning, technically speaking, your cases in that individual building, which is, would be all eight of our buildings, those cases would go to a zero. And so every Monday, when we start back to school, we're at zero. Now, if you get a certain amount of cases, for example, in the elementary level, if you get two cases, those students were in school that week, then you've got to do something. In the past, we've closed between, you know, two to four, excuse me, three to seven days, and now we have to close a lot fewer days. But also, if, depending on when that last student of the positive case was in school, we could do a deep cleaning. For example, if our second case in elementary, that student was in school yesterday, then we could clean the school beginning after school today, because you have to wait a 24-hour period, deep clean overnight or in the second shift, and students could arrive back to school the next morning without any interruption. So we're actually very pleased that this is a possibility moving forward. We anticipate fewer school closings as we turn the bend here going into the, you know, round and third to come to home here in May. So with that said, there's a link that gives you those details, the number of cases that will cause a closure, sizes of the buildings. Once again, our high school's considered large. Both our middle schools are considered medium size, and our elementars are all in the small-size school range. The next section that we, is a strike through, which is a change. We're going to take out the travel restrictions. That's no longer a mandate, so that's going to come off. Right underneath the travel restrictions, we have some technical changes like page numbers, but we are adding a phrase in here about playground use and playground equipment, which basically, we've asked students to sanitize before using equipment, sanitize after using equipment, and that equipment will be cleaned after use at least daily, depending on time. And most of that equipment's used in the middle of the day during lunchtime. Following that, visitors to school, we are opening that up to the discretion of the principal based upon a need, but it is limited to essential visitors. Limiting nonessential visitors, volunteers, and activities, that should be coordinated with, through my office as far as visitors to school. Moving right along, as Dr. Walsh mentioned, social distancing is really important. I can't stress enough, we know that many adults are becoming vaccinated, becoming fully vaccinated, but I want to remind everyone that even though if you have your vaccination and you're fully vaccinated, which is that 10-day period following your last shot, if it's a dual-dose shot, then you are considered fully vaccinated, you can still contract COVID-19, just like a flu shot. You can still get the flu after having your flu shot. So I want people to understand, please don't let your guard down. We've asked our employees to maintain wearing their mask, keep in social distance as much as possible when possible, and also understand that when we do contact tracing, the rules of social distance going from six foot back to three foot has not changed. In other words, anybody that you've been within that barrier of six feet or closer for 15 minutes, that's a change. It's now consecutive minutes, even though the Allegheny County Health Department, as well as Bethel Park, was using consecutive minutes. You would be considering close contact, and you would have to quarantine. So I just want to make that real clear, that everybody knows that some of these rules are great, but there are situations where the rules themselves, another rule trumps it, such as tracing. Field trips are going to be limited. That's going to be obviously coordinated through my office as far as field trips go. And then, we, once again, throughout the document, there's deep cleaning, there's some more striking of the travel. Group work is now limited, once again, with social distancing, and social distancing is also, in the final excerpt in the document itself, is a key part. So there's not a lot of changes, but certainly ones that make sense, and we are, once again, still staying and following the guidelines that the Department of Ed has put upon us, as well as our coordination with the Allegheny County Health Department. That's basically it. Thank you.
I think a lot of parents will have questions, and maybe it's, I think you did a good job of kind of explaining what is still in place, but, you know, we've been talking about staff being vaccinated and all that stuff, and I think it'd be good to have a note on our homepage, or maybe even a part of this plan, kind of explaining, you know, why now that even though the staff has been fully vaccinated, we're not back in school five days? Because I think that question is going to be on everybody's mind, and so if we can kind of preempt those questions with something on the website, I think that would be good.
I'm glad you brought that up. We, that was one of the questions that I raised, because I know there was conversation, you know, several months back about the possibilities going to five days. But where we are right now, the four days, working with all the cleaning that we have to do and getting those numbers back to zero the following Monday, moving to a five-day for just about a little over a month at this point, would probably, we would need to hold on that, do some summer planning, and see where we are for the fall on what we can do as far as five-day goes. Yes, and we can certainly, Mr. Christiansen, communicate that. We did communicate to faculty, staff, and as well as sending a note to parents, the importance of, you know, that vaccination doesn't mean you're home free and you can just do risky behavior because you can still contract the COVID-19. So we can follow up with some of those points as well. Thank you.
So, Dr. Gensani, you just mentioned reevaluate for the fall, possibly five days. I didn't even know that it was an option. Honestly, I can't foresee a situation where everybody's had an opportunity to be vaccinated and we're not in five days. COVID's not going to go away. You know, the idea was to slow the curve in order to give the vulnerable people the ability to be vaccinated. I personally won't even entertain the idea of not having our children in five days a week in the fall.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nagel. Miss, yea or nay to five days in the fall?
I won't entertain anything but five days.
Yeah, you're saying absolutely, absolutely five days. No other option.
Yep, I agree.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
I agree.
I agree.
Agree.
It's decided. Make it happen.
Well, and that's all also contingent on the fact that we're not going to do the remote component with our students, in the classroom with our regular students. You know, Mr. Lenoski gave us a report about, you know, taking those students and having another teacher with them or something like that.
Or BP Academy.
But my question is, does state law require us to continue remote learning?
I'm glad you brought that up. I was negligent talking about that. As you know, for the 2021 school year, the entire year, we are compelled to offer remote learning, and it's a wait-and-see. I hate to say it. We won't know until the summer if the state will continue that approach, or if they will lighten that approach and let that be up to the individual local decision.
Yeah.
I think what we learned from last summer is let's not wait till this summer to determine that. Let's assume right now that we're going to be in school five days, everybody's in school five days, and we're doing remote learning. Let's not wait till June or July to wait for the state to tell us that. Let's just assume that and come up with a plan.
Plan for the worst, hope for the best.
Yeah, and I have asked our state representative, when they have had meetings at the Department of Education, Secretary of Education in Pennsylvania, that exact question, and I have been told that they have dodged the answer.
And Dr. Gensani, if it looks like we're not going back now at all this year, I think we should be notifying our parents, because they keep hoping that next week they're going to go back, and next week, and they should, you know, they can make plans for the rest of the year to just say, write it off, you know?
I agree. We should be communicating, be transparent as much as possible, yes.
Okay, that's all the questions. That's all I had from my part of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh.
I guess we give you our opinions here. If you need this as a formal board, you know, mandate, should we put it on the agenda for next week, that that's our resolution or our intent, so that at least, you know, it gives you authorization to go put together that plan, five days with remote option?
Yeah. Do you think you need a motion to set that?
It's more for you. I mean, do you need something like that from the board?
It's not required in terms of board operation. I think that the administration heard loud and clear that that must be intense. My response is it's not legally required, but, you know, there is something to be said for a public-faking apparition if that's a goal. And so I think that that's up to the board.
I think it would be good for the community.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yes, I think we should do that.
For the community, and I think it would be good to let parents know that if they still need a remote option, we are still looking into. still need a remote option, we are still looking into that, and, you know, hopefully over the next, at the April meeting, we'll have an update between Dr. Walsh and Mr. Lenoski on that.
Yeah, maybe if we could have that too. I mean, it may be a remote option, may not be similar to what we're doing today, but
Correct. It may be a fully remote option, yeah.
Do learning from home.
Right.
We can always do more. I was referring to simply the requirement from the state, whether they're going to require us like they did this year. But certainly, if that's the pleasure of the board, we can certainly plan to do that. So, with a green light, we will.
I think you heard what our desire is. Okay, let's move on with the committee work then. Mr. Scouzo, the Curriculum Committee?
Okay, there are three items. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Community College of Beaver County, which will provide high-qualified high-school students the opportunity to earn college credits by participating in concurrent enrollment classes pending final review by our solicitor. Number two, approval, our discussion of a motion to approve a student's survey from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. And number three, Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to permit a foreign-exchange student through Pan-Atlantic Foundation to engage in studies at the high-school for the 2021-2022 school year pending receipt of all necessary documentation. Questions, comments, discussion?
Dr. Walsh, do you want to talk about the student survey that was discussed at the diversity?
Yes, thank you. So, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee has completed surveys of faculty, staff, administration, and parents, and are very interested in getting perspective from students about their experiences in the school district with, on those issues. There is a state-level survey that we could use and obviously customize for our purposes on this, but we understand that the board typically has to pre-approve the administration of student surveys before they can be administered to the students. So, we don't have it ready yet, and so we put the motion up here just to put the board on alert that Dr. Work and members of the committee will be working on revising that survey and getting it ready for your approval for next Tuesday, so we can get it to students in early May and get results back for the committee to use before the summer.
So, we will have the survey ready, do you believe?
That's our goal.
I just emailed it. I was waiting for feedback. We asked
I actually have some feedback. I did have a chance just to glance at it. I think that generally all the questions are fine. There's no issues. I don't, it's not so much the questions. I'm just concerned that the younger-aged students are not going to be able to answer these questions properly. I mean, number 11, my teachers have high behavioral and academic expectations for all students. You give out to a second grader, what are they going to say to you?
Yeah, I'm not even sure that we talked about
No, I mean, but questions like that, I mean, that's concerning to me, that they're not going to be able to answer that.
Yeah, I completely agree. And we didn't, as the committee, didn't really discuss the ages, age range that they were trying to target with the survey. I sense it was going to be the older kids.
But it lists all the schools.
Yeah.
It lists all the schools. That's why, that's why I'm bringing that up.
Again, we haven't committed to the age range yet. We're still working on those details. What you have there from Dr. Work is a draft.
Is a draft. It's very, it was a draft. And when I emailed it to you, I reiterated that it is a draft.
Oh, sure.
I did put in, when we were taking it from the survey that was done, the Pennsylvania Department of Ed had on the equity toolkit that they have provided, they had, the questions were established there in our preparation. It was, to have it in the survey and then take it out was a little bit easier. So, that was, that was my misleading of view, just that we need to discuss that further.
Yeah, because even number 10 is another one that I don't know how the, you know, the younger student's going to have any possibility of answering.
As far as the ages, we didn't get into exactly what ages, but we did touch on not only the ability of the younger students to be able to answer thoughtfully, but the concern that these are things that younger students aren't thinking about and suggesting things to them that might not be, might not be, they might not be ready to have suggested to them. So, we are aware of those concerns. This, again, is the draft off of the state toolkit. The administration, as well as committee members, are going to be revising it, trying to cater it more towards our district students.
So, is there a data, since this came from a state survey, is there a state database of results that we could compare our results to, so we kind of know where we stand relative to other districts?
It was a reference. The reference actually came, it was on the toolkit through the Colorado State Toolkit, which was actually quoted from the Minneapolis Public Schools.
But I was more interested in, is there a set of data behind that survey that you can compare it to?
It is not, it is not like the PA School Climate Survey that they give data for.
This is, this is more of a continuation of the other surveys. The other surveys that have already been given to the staff, the administration, the public, were part of this toolkit also. This is a continuation of that. The goal of the survey is more so to get an idea of what we know and what we don't know, where we feel we are with the district, kind of, you know, to, as Dr. Walsh puts it, look back, you know, before we start looking around. Well, we're looking back and looking around right now before we start looking ahead, trying to get an idea of where we are and where the different stakeholders feel we are in, within our district. So, I don't even know, with what we're looking to achieve from this, that other districts' data would be really relevant.
Yeah, I don't know that we, there is no database that I'm aware of.
Yeah, okay. I didn't think there would. I was just
I think we do. Go ahead.
The AIU got a new director, and they may have some comparisons for you to use, you know, compare, see what we are.
My comment would be, we need to take a look at this a lot more seriously before we put this out in our student population. I'm not against doing it. I'm 100% for it, but I want to make sure that you can get results that are skewed because there was misunderstanding or misinterpretation of a question, and that's not going to help us at all. So, I think we need to make sure we get a thorough review, and also a legal review, too.
The problem is that there's only one month left of school, and I think the intention was to get a survey approved so that it could go out after next week's meeting, which is next Wednesday, which is after our school board meeting. So, there's a timing concern there. So, as we work through the survey, possibly we could approve a survey and then let the final be approval through email or something. I'm not sure. I don't know.
Well, I
I don't know exactly.
If I may, Dr. Walsh, what I was kind of seeing of the process here was, because we're trying to get it out in May before our May meeting, we need approval to proceed. However, we're, as we proceed, we're going to be revising it, and I was under the impression we'd be sharing it with the board before we gave it to the students. So, if anybody was in disagreement with the final product, we still have the ability not to send it out at that point, or to revise it a little further at that point.
Yeah.
But we need to have approval to be able to go through that process, and that's kind of, I think, what we're seeking here.
Just one comment on the survey is
Sounds like a lot in one week to do, you know? I do like the idea of maybe differentiating the questions per level, elementary, middle school, and high school. Elementary, they're not going to sit there for 21 questions. It needs to be a little bit more direct and forward towards their level of honesty and ability.
I won't vote for it, if that's the case.
Okay. So, it's going to be the quick suggestion that you could add one or two to the motion for next week. That puts in those next steps that you plan on making sure that there is consensus around the table before it goes out, and like the pending review of what the ruling
Okay. Okay. So, pending review of solicitor and pending review of board members, or something?
And final review.
Final review, final review.
Yeah, I have concerns about, there's age appropriateness here that is
I don't understand how you can answer.
I mean, one of these questions says, "If my teacher hurts someone's feelings, they accept responsibility and apologize. A student is taught to do the same."
Yes. Again, let me just emphasize, this was the state's version. We just downloaded. We're starting to work on it. I would give it to you tonight so you know where we're headed. It has not been revised, reviewed. The committee hasn't even seen it yet. There's some work to do. And I get Mr. McGregor's comment about, that's a lot to do in a week. I don't see us actually having it done in a week. I think we're going to have a version to take to the committee next Wednesday, let them bless and redress those questions, and even debate what grade levels they wanted to target with the survey. I don't believe there was any motivation to survey the younger kids anyway. So, there's work to do on it. I acknowledge that, and tonight's point is, this is your first even notion that we're looking to do this, and unfortunately, the document's not anywhere ready for you to discuss. It's really, really raw.
Right. As I said, this is the, and Dr. Walsh just said, this is to take to the committee so we can start working on revising it, and this is just what came as a recommendation from the state. We shared the documents for all of the other levels directly from the state, because we were sharing them with adults, and we were just looking at where we are. One of the reasons we held back from sharing this document at that point was because we felt it needed to be catered more and revised more and worked towards our students and our population better, so.
So, did we just spend 10 minutes to arrive at the conclusion that we don't have anything to talk about yet?
No, we spent 10 minutes explaining to you that we need a vote to proceed.
Yeah, okay.
So, any other questions about the Beaver County memorandum? I think we've had it with Beaver County before. So, that's just sort of a re-agree. And the foreign-exchange student, we've had, we've accepted foreign-exchange students before. I don't know from this particular foundation, but probably. Do we know from the Pan-American Foundation?
Yeah, this stuff is just fresh. So, we, we have some of the documents. There are other things that the organization is supposed to provide for us.
Okay.
And they were holding back until we had, they had approval that the district would accept students next year
Okay.
Before they would pursue those
Cause of COVID, and
Correct, right. So, this was, this, the motion, the language is actually the same language we've used previous years to get approval to accept the student, and the missing documents are pending this approval.
Okay, so, of those three items, is there anyone in particular that should not go on the consent agenda?
On three.
Okay. So, one and three can go on the consent agenda? Is everyone okay with that? Okay, one and three are going on the consent agenda.
And Mrs. Dobus, I have a text request to remember for everybody to turn on their microphones. It is very hard for people to hear on YouTube if we do not turn on our microphones.
Okay, mine's on. Okay, Mr. McGregor?
Okay, we have seven items under personnel. I'll read the list out. Approval of extended school-year program, approval of COVID-19 compensatory services tutoring, staffing, acceptance of resignation, approval of sabbatical leave of absence, memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, change of assignment, and finally, the appointment of personnel.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about any one of these seven items, or would like further explanation?
Number one has no names listed.
Correct. We need to get the program approved, then we can post for positions.
Okay.
And this is for the, this is primarily for the special ed program?
Correct.
It's not for the tutoring?
Correct.
For COVID?
It will be a separate item before the board. This one speaks specifically to the summer extended school-year program.
That we do every year?
Correct, and same with item number two. This one is not every year. This one is specifically necessary because of COVID, but it speaks to the needs of special education students.
Okay.
Now, Dr. Walsh, do they have a date for the COVID compensatory services? Does it run concurrently with ESY?
I don't have that answer, and is Lori?
It's running right now, actually. It runs throughout the school year, so it has to be done now. So, they're doing it multiple times throughout the week.
Okay. I was just asking, in case a parent wants both. Obviously, if they're around the same time, if they are at the same time, they could only choose one or the other. So, that information would help us in terms of staffing for both programs. So, okay.
I think the one, number one is for July, and number two is for the, up until the end of this school year, till the end of June. I mean, till whenever the last day of school is. And the memorandum of understanding is for this particular number one and two, correct?
It is, it's mentioned in there that we would, there is already an agreed-upon rate in the teachers' collective bargaining agreement for extended school-year service. The motion here to approve a new agreement that would establish the terms for the summer school, summer tutoring, summer remediation, and enrichment.
For anyone who wants that remediation.
Correct. This would be the non-extended school-year programs. And that piece, particular pieces, would all be funded through federal stimulus money.
Okay. I'm liking, I'm liking to see that our salaries have come up to where other districts, to be more competitive, to get teachers to volunteer their time. So, thank you for working with the Federation on that.
Okay, of the seven items then, any other questions or comments? Is there, are there any of those items that anyone would like to hold out from the consent agenda?
Question for five, will we be able to roll out more information next week on the summer programming?
Yes. I'm looking for a nod. Yes.
But it won't be part of the motion, right?
It would not. This is, this is separate. I think that we are, we've done some review, and we're well-prepared to make a recommendation to the board. We have some things that we need to kind of tweak between now and then, but we should be, I should be able to give you a presentation or before the board meeting next week, so you can take a look at it.
Again, we had success in the, at the holiday break, but
Yes.
We rolled it out in such a short time. I just, I want to get this out as quickly as possible, rightfully done, you know?
Yes, sir.
So, we can get as much interest and hopefully have as much people involved, students involved, and staff.
Yeah, we were talking about that just today, in fact, about, you know, marketing materials and the different sequence of communications that need to go in order for this to be a real option for families.
Because Mrs. Rowland mentioned, still some has got a 30% so far, but a lot of them, you said before, involve certificates and for the students, right? You said 30% it's still signed.
About 30% responded, yes.
Which would be helpful.
Yeah, I would say by, you know, May 1st, we should have this out so people can start making plans around summer vacation.
Exactly the timeline we put for ourselves, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, so, again, any of those seven items that we, you would want to hold out from the consent agenda? Okay, all seven can go under consent. Mr. Christensen?
Under the Finance Committee, there's six items, one through four, or one through three.
I have 10.
Oh, did I not? Oh, sorry. My mistake with my mouse. So, items one through three are the standard My mistake with my mouse. So items one through three are the standard salaries, bills, financial report. I recommend that all of those go onto the consent agenda. Any questions on the other items on the rest of the list? I have a couple. And let me tee those up first, and then others can ask questions. And we can talk about if these all go on the consent agenda. The, where did it go now? Oh, the facilities waiver. So this is to run a program for kind of workplace readiness. So can you tell us a little bit about that a little bit more? I mean, it sounds like a good program, absolutely a great reason to waive those fees. You want, you want to just take a little time and talk about the program? Sounds like a good one.
I think Sarah Schuh is on the line or in the webex. She probably can address them better than anyone.
Yes, absolutely. Hi, everybody. This is a new initiative through our district that we are collaborating with Bender Leadership Academy, which is a nonprofit. And they previously have offered programs down at Carlo College. That was the game plan for last year to have several of our students attend there. And what they focus is on workplace readiness, specifically for students with disabilities. They work self-motivation, career readiness, interview skills, resume building. And they are nonprofit and it's free to all, the district and to the students as it's funded through OVR.
Okay.
This year, they're not going to be able to offer it in person due to COVID until they had a facility to allow them to come in. We did not have enough students to staff their program. So I collaborated with several of the other districts to have enough students to work on this program. So there's about five other districts that will have students participating in there.
Okay, that was going to be my question. It is open to other districts to attend also?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct. It'll run concurrently with our ESY program. So there'll be staff in the building at all times, including myself overseeing the program. They provide teachers and staffing. We will have all their clearances covered and on file in our office. Transportation will run with our own transportation and the neighboring districts that are participating are paying for their own transportation.
Okay, a good program. Thank you. I didn't have any other questions on this. Anybody else?
The intra-fund transfer, that's to put the typical money that we put in every year into the capital reserve for those particular items such as the turf replacement, the buses and.
That's correct. That's what you had budgeted in the current year's budget to transfer.
Anyone else have any other questions? Is the 403B investment provider, that would be for staff?
That's for teachers. Yeah, Great American has kind of discontinued that service and this company takes their place. So that's the reason we have the motion on there. It's just a, basically a change in company.
In name, okay. Okay, is there any, are there any items in the finance that you want to hold out of the consent agenda?
I would recommend putting them all in.
Okay, all 10 can go to consent. Short meeting next week. All right, Ms. Turner, would you please talk a little bit about your policies?
I will. I may need help from Anthony and Dr. Walsh as we go through this. The first one is the waiver of the policy requirement 217 for graduation. Again, this is the same waiver we asked for last year at this time. It has to do with keystones being suspended for graduation and other pathways for students to meet the requirements for graduation without a proficiency in the areas for the keystones. Did I hit that correctly?
Is this one, is this the first of the three readings then?
This one we need to approve.
We need to approve? Okay.
So this will go on the consent agenda unless anybody has any concerns. Everything else is readings and removals.
Right, okay.
But this again is because our policy was very specific when it was written. We needed to make some changes based on Pennsylvania guidelines for the class of 2020, 2021, 2022. 2023, I believe, Dr. Walsh, we're kind of out of the clear. We can go back to a more, we can unspecified and be a little more generic after 2023.
Right. I believe that part of the recommendation was perhaps tweak the language so we wouldn't be in this situation every year, to not make it so specific that there was Keystone scores or something of that nature.
Right, we took naming out of it altogether. So it's, the Keystone name is out of it and some other things that needed to be tweaked. So I'd ask that that move to be consent agenda unless anybody has any concerns. Okay, next item up is number two, is the approval of policies for the first of three readings. Approval 218.3 Discipline of Students Convicted Adjudicated of Sexual Assault and Policy 304 Response to Student Welfare. These two, I believe 2018 has to do with still Title IX changes. And student welfare.
Just clarifying some language about.
That's what I thought. My, I got too many things open. Mine is spinning like crazy.
So my assumption is that these have all been recommendations from PSBA?
Yes.
But in two, three, and four?
Yes.
And, and there isn't any of them that we have intentionally changed other than what PSBA?
And the good news is, is that if those intentional changes aren't in the PSBA recommendation, they will be in our version that we bring before the board for public reading. So that we capture all of that before it's moved to the board level.
Correct.
But so, but there's nothing in there that's, that's us, not PSBA and these three things?
These are all just recommended changes, language updates. 218 was, the law was changed at Pennsylvania last summer that necessitated this change. We do have a little backlog of some policies that we're trying to get to the board as expeditiously as we can, but we do need time internally to examine them.
Right, right.
Make sure that they're ready for, for public reading.
Right. And the other thing that we have made the adjustment with, with Anthony coming on in the HR department and Dr. Walsh, is going to the PSBA realm of everything is under 300. So we're getting rid of our 400 and our 500s and we're combining them all under 300 for personnel. So personnel is all, everything in, in every staff member at the education level, it is not broken out by your respective staff level.
Right.
So that's the rescinds. The rescinds are the duplicate copies in other areas. Okay.
Yes. So the revisions for number three, there are a list of them, 137, 1150, 209, 217, 233, 303, 314, 331, 333, 334, 335, 611, 626, 8011, and 8013. And the revisions are putting our 300, our 400 and 500 into those.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so number one will go on to consent and the other two, we just will have our second reading for those items next week.
Correct. And then the final one is the fourth policy to rescind, the 400 and 500.
Okay, thank you. Okay, regarding the student agreement, that can probably go into the board consent agenda. And the approval of the revised phase school reopening, that should not go in the consent agenda because we don't really have the final copy yet. So. All right.
In the other, we had talked before and I, I know there was some agreement, others, but it wasn't clear to me, are we going to put a motion on there regarding our intent to resume school five days a week in the fall?
Yeah, we will add that for next week.
Okay.
Are there any phone calls at this time?
There are not. But there's more, there's more.
There's 13, but I think there's duplicates in here. All same subject, and I think there's duplicates.
Okay, I will read the first one. Anita Wise, 5847 Wallace Avenue. Let me share my personal perspective on the subject of allowing incoming freshmen twirl with the high school majorettes. My girls are in elementary school. They've watched girls in our neighborhood twirl since they were young and they've, all they've wanted to do is twirl. One of the biggest reasons we've agreed is because they will be part of the high school band. They also play an instrument, but they want to dance and twirl. Our goal of allowing them to start this at a young age was so they could do this long-term and be part of a school activity that fosters so many positive attributes they can carry throughout their adulthood. To think they can't do this starting freshman year is quite disheartening, especially when we know other sports are allowing eighth graders play on a ninth grade team. Why is twirl any different?
I can take the second one. This is from Cassandra Rankin, 1508 Andrea Drive. Why did my eighth grade daughter and her fellow eighth grade twirlers get intimidated by a future leader in the marching band? Why can't incoming freshmen try out for their sport? Majorettes in this case. Everything seems so rushed and tryouts never advertised anywhere except Instagram. Things seem to be getting done in an effort to keep my daughter and other incoming freshmen from succeeding in their sport. Seems like they would rather have only a couple majorettes in total than have an actual team. Eighth or ninth graders filled out form last night. Majorettes, Bethets are the only program in BP that doesn't allow freshmen. That's not fair. These girls are state champions and twirl is a part of the BP Recreation Center. They should be able to represent their school.
Third one, from Nick Walsh, 5868 Bryan Drive. In the spirit of equality and the demonstrated district that truly embraces diversity, eighth grade girls heading into ninth grade should have the equal opportunity to participate in the marching band as a majorette, just as future ninth graders do to play in an instrument. Bethel Park should embrace these young ladies and their passion and permit high school students to participate in high school activities. In contrast, eighth grade boys are actively playing baseball on the ninth grade baseball team while not even a member of the high school, but these young ladies are not permitted to do so. Very disappointing and helping Bethel Park can progress its policy to be more accepting of our girls and providing them with opportunities to excel in their high school experience.
Okay, I'll take the next one. Autumn Walsh, 5868 Bryan Drive. It is time for Bethel Park to permit eighth grade girls going to ninth grade the opportunity to play majorettes. It is very. It is very unfair that these girls that do their own specialty twirling and they are not affected, afforded the same opportunity as others, including male athletes. It is very unfair to see these young ladies that because they twirl, rather than play a flute or football or softball, they are not able to participate in these activities all four years in high school. I wonder what the reaction of football parents would be if their boys couldn't play football until 10th grade and had no team or opportunity for ninth grade. That is precisely what these girls are experiencing. We should value their worth and provide them with the same opportunities that their classmates have.
I can do the next one. Tracy Kashovich, 3344 Appell Road, Bethel Park. This is a follow-up comment in regards to the letter I submitted at the last board meeting, 32321 in regards to the request to allow freshman students to try out for the majorette position on the high school band. Has there been any further discussion about this? At this point, I would like, I have liked to have seen this to be an agenda item, not just a general comment. This is a question that has been asked several years, not just last month. I would, I would like to better understand why freshman students are not permitted to try out to become a majorette. All other districts around Bethel allow this and all other sports activities allow it. At the last meeting, you mentioned that it would be up to the band director. Was this information given to the band director? Has there been any discussion about this? Change is good and it's time to change. It's time, it's time a change is made. Please allow our children to be part of what means the most to them and allow them to at least try out. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is from Makyla Yee, 5863 Wallace Avenue. Hi there. My name is Makyla Yee. I'm a senior graduating this year. I've been a part of the majorettes for as long as I possibly could have been, three years. Despite all other athletes, extracurricular activities, and even marching band instrumentalists being permitted to participate in their activity for all four years, I was excluded along with several other students, primarily young girls. While my friends at Upper St. Clair, TJ, South Park, and Ringgold were able to spend their freshman year twirling, I was excluded. While my friends from my own school district got to enjoy and experience the band by playing their instruments, I was excluded, not because of my ability, not because of my qualifications, but because of my age. And that was, that was, for whatever reason, acceptable to all other groups. I would even go so far as to call this sexism. Is it a coincidence that the only demographically female section of the marching band is also the only part of the marching band that is being excluded? One extremely insulting reason that we've been given as to why we cannot try out as freshmen is because we don't know how to march. This suggests that these young, intelligent women are inferior to their freshman instrumentalists counterparts who managed to learn how to march. This has been an ongoing issue that has continuously been discussed with the band directors. While this may be your first time hearing about it, this issue has been prominent for years now. It's infuriating that my own school district is willing to and wanting to continue to exclude young women. Time and time again, our request has been met with maybe next year. This redundant response is outdone, one that has been used to marginalize young women all through history. It's time to take a step back and see the continued pattern of students being silenced by the administrators who are entrusted to prioritize them.
Next one's from Gabriella Balavec. Hello, my name is Gabriella. I'm an eighth grader at IMS. I currently twirl competitively and very interested in trying out to be a majorette with Bethel Park. I'm looking forward to creating positive memories of my high school years and I'm ready now with my experience to be a part of the team. I already put time, practice, and effort into competing and I'm willing to do so for our school as well. I am also considering those younger than me, including my two younger sisters who are following my footsteps and are interested in trying out as they prepare for their freshman years. Please allow us the opportunity to make amazing memories as majorettes as we begin high school. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Next one's Charlie Donaldson. My name is Charlie, I'm sorry, 5665 Koffler Drive. My name is Charlie Donaldson and I'm an eighth grade at IMS. I have twirled with the BP rec program for the past three years and our team won the state twirling championships this past weekend. I love twirling because of the challenges it presents and the friendships I have made. Many of my teammates are in my grade. Yesterday, I attended a meeting at the high school for majorette's tryouts. Advertisements for the meeting did not include grade levels, yet my understanding from the meeting is that I may not be allowed to try out because I am only in eighth grade. There are many athletes that are preparing to try out for their sport for the next year musicals, preparing for the marching band, or musicians preparing for the marching band because as a freshman, they will be able to participate, but I cannot. Yesterday, they said it was always this way. But can you imagine a world where Rosa Parks didn't fight for change? Or a world where Ruth Bader Ginsburg just gave up because someone said she couldn't be a Supreme Court justice? I cannot and do not want to think about what the world would look like without change. Do you? In a world where we can fight for equity and inclusion, why are you excluding the rising freshman girls who want the, want an opportunity to participate as an athlete and in the marching band? Every other freshman in the BPSD has the opportunity to participate as an athlete or in the marching band except for the majorettes and Bethets. Why does this even have to be asked? I find it difficult to understand how in the year 2021, we choose to exclude students from activities when we create clubs such as Stand to promote standing up for the ideals through student participation. We, as students, want to participate. I would like to try out for majorettes for next school year. Every other student gets the opportunity to try out for their sport except us. Every other student gets the opportunity to try out for their sport, except us. Please consider allowing eighth grade students the opportunity to try out for majorettes, Bethettes for next school year.
Isabel Townsend, 1508 Andrea Drive. I would be an incoming freshman, and I would love the opportunity to try out for majorettes. I believe it is unfair that current eighth graders are not allowed to join when they are allowed to join almost all other activities within the school district. Not only would it add numbers to the majorette team, it would also give freshmen an opportunity to succeed in their sport of twirling. Most, if not all, of the eighth graders trying and out not only have experience, but they represent Bethel Park through the rec center and are state champions in twirling, but are not allowed to represent their school. This is, this is an outdated rule that needs to be changed now, to be fair, not only for my teammates and I, but the future generations of aspiring majorettes.
Next one is Carrie Glinsky, 366 Middlegate Drive. I have attended every school orientation my kids have attended, have attended from elementary to high school. At, at every one of these, those meetings, the principal will get up and speak about how important to have your children participate in activities. There are, there are a group of ninth grade girls would, 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 would love the opportunity to try out for majorettes and then be, are being told no. I do not have any daughters in ninth grade trying out. I just feel it's only fair to allow them to try out and have the opportunity to be in the activity they are good at. I think about 1,500 students attend the high school, so about half of girls, only five girls were majorettes last year. It's a compliment to the band that the girls were, went, want to participate, it's a great organization.
Michelle Miller, 29 Oregon Trail. I'm writing, I'm writing you all this evening because I've yet to get a response on whether the board has made a decision on allowing tryouts for ninth grade majorettes. These girls are simply asking for a tryout opportunity, their abilities will be shown during their tryout, isn't that what a tryout is for? Keeping in mind that a large part of the current board ran on moving the district forward, these neighboring districts allow ninth grade majorettes, Thomas Jefferson, Upper St. Clair, South Park, Cannon Mac, Keystone Oaks, and Seton La Salle. The decision is in your hands. Girls, sports opportunities should be the same as boys, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that the basis of Title IX? Thank you, Michelle Miller, 29 Oregon Trail.
Chella Miller, 29 Oregon Trail. Hi, my name is Chella Miller, I'm currently in eighth grade at IMS. I was happy to be able to attend the informative meeting yesterday about the future Bethettes and majorettes. I filled out the form requested by the district, as many of my eighth grade friends did also. I would like to please ask the board to consider ninth grade majorettes for the upcoming tryouts. My friends in neighboring schools have started as majorettes in ninth grade. I've been twirling since kindergarten, competing since fourth grade, and even marched as a feature group in the Thanksgiving parades in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. I would love the opportunity to try out as a ninth grader and be part of the BPHS infamous marching band. Thank you, Chella Miller, 29 Oregon Trail.
All right, the last one I have is Autumn Walsh, 5868 Bryan Drive. It is time for Bethel Park to admit eighth grade girls going to ninth grade the opportunity for tryouts for majorettes. It is very unfair that these girls, due to their specialty twirling, are not afforded the same opportunities as others, including male athletes. It is very unfair that these young ladies that, because they twirl, rather than play a flute, or football, or softball, are not able to participate in activities all four years of high school. I wonder what the reaction of the football parents would be if boys couldn't play football until 10th grade and no team or opportunities for ninth grade. This is precisely what these girls are experiencing, we should value their worth and provide them the same opportunities as their other classmates.
Are there any phone calls? Okay. This time, anyone on the board would like to make any comments?
No, I just want to make a quick comment to, thank you very much for expressing your concerns about majorettes and any other concern you might have. It would be nice to hear some people's voices that go along with these concerns, so please consider calling in next week. Ms. Dobis, and the number is, once again?
412-851-6911, and it's on the website also.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments tonight? Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Mr. Nagel?
Do we have to move?
I don't know. Yes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sokuza?
Voice.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.